Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for 2/22/22. I got that straight through. We'll start off this morning with the Pledge of Allegiance, led by our county CEO.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here today, and those of you on Zoom. And we'll start with our consent agenda this morning, which includes the supplemental agenda that was added, items 16G and 21C. Are there any items any of the board members would like to see removed from consent?
I have none.
None? Okay. Any public comments or items to be taken from consent calendar?
I see none.
Yes, sir?
I have a comment for all agenda items.
That'll be next, after we do consent calendar. Thank you.
I see none, Chair.
Okay, and with that, I'd accept a motion.
Second.
Motion Holmes, second Gore. This is a roll call vote. Gore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Yep.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
I'm voting aye, Megan, but I'm recusing on 19D.
Thank you.
Which is a project my husband's working on. Thank you.
So with that, now we'll go to public comment. For those items not on our agenda today, and that's when all the staff now leave, in case we were going to call on them, if you're wondering why. They're not in protest here, they're just... Don't have to address any of those items. So now, these are for items that are not on our agenda, and we'd like to ask you to keep your comments to three minutes per person. So, sir, if you'd like to come up and start?
Peter Friedrich, Placer County resident. Why, the Placer County Board of Supervisors will hopefully and certainly should ask if and when the HSS comes calling to request you platforming praise them, which recently happened in the city of Roseville, does this group desire legitimization from local governments? As we've already established beyond a shadow of a doubt, the HSS is the international wing of India's RSS paramilitary, and the RSS is a violent and fascist organization with a long and bloody track record of attacking the country's religious minorities. That's a fundamental reason why the HSS here in America incessantly approaches city councils, county boards of supervisors, fire departments, police departments, and even congressional offices, begging for a pat on the back, a round of applause, a picture, and a formal resolution, celebrating them as an outstanding cultural organization, a role model for the community. You see, the HSS serves internationally as the primary support base and propaganda mouthpiece for the RSS back in India. While the RSS's cadres are doing the dirty work in India, the HSS and our country is doing its damnedest to ensure that no one in America pays any attention whatsoever to the monster behind the curtain. Whether officially or unofficially, they'll stage rallies in support of the current RSS-backed regime. They'll stage protests against academics, journalists, or politicians here in America who dare to call out the atrocities of the RSS. They'll stage counter protests against Indian minorities here in America who are protesting attacks on their communities back in India. HSS leadership will, in apparent coordination, pour funds into the campaign coffers of American politicians who they know will either whitewash the crimes of the RSS or derail attempts to call out those crimes. They'll even pour funds into the coffers of candidates running to unseat politicians who refuse to bow and scrape. But they don't stop with interfering with American politics. Despite many or most being U.S. citizens, HSS members mobilize to interfere in Indian politics. Top leadership in the HSS were crucial to getting the RSS's political wing elected to head India in 2014. From America, they ran massive political campaigns to support election of their RSS candidates in India. Going even further, perhaps thousands of them actually traveled to India to serve as campaign workers. Yes, American citizens traveled to India to pressure Indian citizens to vote for RSS-backed candidates. Meanwhile, getting legitimized by local governments in America helps whitewash the HSS so that they can more effectively deny the reality that the RSS's hands are bloodstained. So, if and when the HSS ever approaches you here, please remember to ask the only questions which matter, questions which Roseville unfortunately failed to ask. What is the HSS? What is the RSS? And are or are they not connected to each other? Oh, and what does the HSS gain from you platforming and praising them? I've just given you a hint of an answer to all those questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other members of the public who'd like to speak this morning?
We have one.
Okay, we have somebody on Zoom. Kevin, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name's Kevin Cooper. I live in Rockland. I have reached out to each one of you at different levels, along with other levels of both city and other government, asking what path could be taken by the county to add historical deaths to the COVID dashboard that the county supports. I've yet to get any kind of response, so I really have two questions to the board, knowing that you cannot act on it now. But the first one is some kind of formal response on if the data can be added, and if not, why. But more importantly, I would ask for a vote to be taken up by the board to either add or not to add the data, and to provide some kind of reasoning as to why we would not add just generic cause-of-death data to the COVID website. As I made it clear in the emails I sent to you guys, not having some kind of historical reference of the amounts of data by cause, or amounts of deaths by cause for the last couple of years makes it very difficult for people to understand what COVID's doing in our county. And so I think it's vital to complete the dataset on the COVID dashboard the county basically controls and pays for, and either A, say, hey, we're not going to add it, here's why, or we are going to add it, and here's when and how, but with some kind of discussion that takes me past the discussion I had when I met with Dr. Oldham almost two months ago now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin.
Chair, I see no further public comment.
Okay, with no further comment, we'll move on to board member and county executive reports. Any board member reports?
I'll just, I'll report that Saturday I attended the Candidates Workshop that Ryan Ronco put on, and was really an outstanding turnout. A lot of candidates interested in running for various seats, so it was a good turnout, and appreciated the great work of our Elections Department to encourage people to learn about how to run for office. So, it was well done. Todd, did you have any reports?
Yeah, just one item I wanted to share with you, and I know this is a number of years in the making. Actually, we have a groundbreaking tomorrow for our new Health and Human Services building up at the DeWitt, our Government Center campus. So I just wanted to let you know, and the public know, that this project is going to be getting off the ground here shortly, and it'll be starting the process coming tomorrow around 2:00 p.m. So, good work there, and I think it's going to be a really catalyst-changing project for that entire area.
Thank you, Todd. Seeing no other reports. We are way ahead of schedule today, which we want to stay. It's okay, we'll go to our department items. And our first one is item number eight. This is with our District Attorney's Office. They're probably not quite ready for us.
I'm looking to walk in.
No one expects us to be on department items this quickly, and I'm sorry we can't do the commendation yet for you.
This is probably a dumb question, but what happened to item three?
Item three is a timed item, and that'll be heard at 9:50. We can't take timed items up ahead of their schedule. We can take them later than the schedule.
Well, that was a dumb question.
No, it was not a dumb question. We try to estimate the time.
Jerry's in the room. Do we want to take Sheriff item?
Okay, great. So we'll go to item nine, then, while we're waiting.
Lucky you.
Right?
This is...
You can hold it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, my name is Jerry Rogers with the Placer County Sheriff's Office, and I come to you asking your approval of an amendment to the contract between the Placer County Sheriff's Office and Nevada County Sheriff's Office for booking and jail services, adjusting the amount to $488,008 for the term of July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022. And funding for the agreement is included in the Sheriff's Office fiscal year 21-22 budget. And with that, happy to answer any questions that you may have. I know it's short and sweet, but...
Great, thank you. Are there any questions?
You know, I'm just curious.
Yeah, yes.
So, do you use that amount every year? It's about the same amount every year, and I'm guessing it just depends on how often people are arrested?
In the, in the contract, it actually increases 3%.
Okay.
And so, next year, since this is the Fourth Amendment, we are going to go back to Nevada County and have discussions again with the contract and revisit that.
So it's a one-time plat fee?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And so there is, and I was going to ask, about how many people are we, how much use is that facility getting?
I don't know the specifics, but I can definitely get some answers for you later.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Or was there another question?
Yeah, just one more question. I'm a little bit late to the buzzer.
No, no problem.
Could you explain to us a little bit about how this works, the contract that we have with the Nevada County Sheriff's Office for booking? Could you just explain it a little bit to us and the public?
So, it's my understanding, so when there is something that happens in the Tahoe region, we, we use that facility as, to book arrestees there. And so, there are occasions where sometimes where if it's, there's mental health services, or even, I'm sorry, medical issues, we actually send them down the hill, down to Auburn and, and the South Placer.
Okay, so we depend on them when we can't keep them up in the Tahoe area?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Right, the, the facility up there is very, very old, and I think it's next on the list of capital projects for the county is to...
That's correct.
...update that sheriff's substation finally.
I think we took a tour of the inadequacies of that building.
Right.
I just wanted the public to kind of get a flavor for wine and contract.
Right.
Very well needed, because we got a little tiny, tiny facility.
Yeah, and we're not the only ones that actually utilize that. I believe CHP uses that as well.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Okay, then I'll go to the public. Are there any public comments or questions?
I see none, Chair.
Not seeing any. I'd entertain a motion.
Second.
I'll give it to Jones. So we'll have a motion Holmes, second Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is the DA's office ready now?
We're going to go to item 10A.
Okay.
Megan's on Zoom, so...
Great. This is item 10A. Megan, are you, are you on Zoom? There we go.
I am. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. I'm Megan Marshall. You're still fairly new Health and Human Services Division Director of Public Health, before you today, requesting the authority to approve the acceptance of an allocation with the California Department of Public Health for the Workforce Developmental Supplemental Funding Allocation from July 1 to June 30 of 2023 in the amount of $962,750. Also fairly short and sweet, much to our counterparts in the Sheriff's Department. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Megan. Are there any questions? I'm not seeing any up here. Okay, any public comment on this item?
I see none, Chair.
Seeing none, then I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion Jones, second Wygant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now where should I go?
Could we go to a break really quickly?
Yes, we're going to go to a break really quickly.
Thank you.
We'll take a five-minute break while we try to round up our staff to tell them we're way ahead of schedule today.
Good job.
Okay, we're back from a quick break, and I believe now we're still waiting on some department items that our staff is on their way for, so we're going to take a closed session, brief closed session. Karen?
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider one item of existing litigation, Larson versus Placer Valley Sports Complex, and one item of anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation.
Great. We'll try to be back at 9:30 to take up the commendation. Thank you. Good, we're going to resume our meeting now. County Council will report out of closed session.
The board meant in closed session to consider the following. Under existing litigation, Sherry Larson versus Placer Valley Sports Complex, the board heard a report and provided direction. On item 2A initiation of litigation, one potential case, the board heard a report and provided direction. That concludes this portion of the closed session. Report out.
Thank you very much, Karen. Okay, now we're going to resume and go to our 9:30 timed item. I'm sorry we're a few minutes late for this. But this is a commendation recognizing the creation of the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program and Placer County Meals on Wheels Provider. With that, I'm going to read a commendation, and then we will talk about it. "In the matter of a commendation recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program, whereas March 2022 marks 50 years since President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 to create a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years of age and older, which became known as the Wheels, Meals on Wheels Program. And whereas Meals on Wheels America is celebrating this momentous occasion that allocated funding to provide grants to states for the establishment, maintenance, operation, and expansion of low-cost meals, projects, nutrition training and education projects, opportunity for social contacts, and other benefits for older Americans. And whereas senior nutrition programs are provided to Placer County residents in the Tahoe and Truckee area of, of the county by Sierra, Sierra Senior Services, and to residents in the western portion of the county by Seniors First. These organizations deliver nutritious meals that help Placer County's older adults age in place by focusing on people who are home alone during the day and have difficulty preparing dishes for themselves. And whereas both Seniors First and Sierra Senior Services offer communal dining programs in addition to meal delivery services in order to provide older adults with opportunities to socialize, which is a critical component in helping senior residents to age in place without facing isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs provide a crucial service to Placer County's aging residents by delivering fresh, hot, healthy meals and much-needed human contact to residents who are often homebound. Now, therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed, we hope, by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer on behalf of its citizens at its regular meeting held on February 22, 2022. The Placer County Board of Supervisors recognizes the value of the Meals on Wheels programs in Placer County and extends deep gratitude to the local organizations that provide this service to our aging residents." So that's our matter for commendation. And any comments from the board, or comments from the public, not just any other public comments? Then we will take a vote. Do I have a motion?
No approval.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion Holmes, and a second Wygant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And with that, we'd like to get a photo, and we'd love to invite both. We have Judy Friedman from the Tahoe area, and I think Jan is with her. Hi, Jan. And Stephanie here in the room. So Stephanie, if you'd like to make a few remarks?
Hi, I'm Stephanie Verstra. I'm the Executive Director of Seniors First, and I want to thank you for your ongoing support of our programs. We truly appreciate it. And right now, during the pandemic, we're serving about 450 clients a day, so we had quite an increase during the pandemic. So, about 10,000 meals a month we're doing. So, thank you so much for your support. We truly appreciate it.
Wow, that's amazing. That's really amazing. And Judy, or Jan, do you want to add any comment from the Sheriff?
Yes, of course. Good morning, Supervisors. First of all, thank you so much for this commendation. I am President of Sierra Senior Services, and I'm joined this morning by my colleague Jan Briscoe, who's also on the board. Just so that you guys know, we do more than you think we do. Our, the numbers we have served have also grown exponentially through the pandemic and have not decreased. And we are in our 20th year of serving the North Lake Tahoe and Truckee community. We're looking forward to 20 more years, and thank you so much for this recognition. We truly appreciate it, and wish we could be there with you for this photo op.
We'll get a photo up there when I deliver, when I deliver your commendation. But thank you, and I think on behalf of all of us, we can't thank both organizations enough for the services you provide to our residents. So with that, we'll do a photo here, and we want all the board members in the photo. I think because they figured we were all older. Even if I do, I don't.
All right, thank you all. Let's take it to the other side.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
Oh, wow.
That's perfect. All right, ready?
Mm-hmm.
There we go. One, two, three. Take a breath with this thing on.
Make sure our eyes are open?
Yeah. Take a big inhale. Three more. There you go. Perfect.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great job.
Thank you. This county is so special because of all the volunteers we have that pitch in. It's So, shall we go to Mr. Guyer's items, since he's...
Yes.
Yes. So, I'm sorry, I'm going to keep you for just a few more minutes, and we'll go then back to several items. And these are items 8A and B, and I believe also 19. Oh, no, that was consent. So, yeah, okay. Mr. Dyer?
Good morning.
Dyer?
They teach us how to prosecute murder cases, but not how to read a board agenda, and when those items come up.
Well, we were a little ahead of schedule for you today.
Well, I, well, that's okay. I saw it as 12:30, so even running early wouldn't have helped. But thank you very much, and it's a pleasure to be here, and Madam Chair, and to the board. Thank you. It's nice to see you all. I am here to talk about two items, two grants that we have received from the California Office of Emergency Services that reflect continuing innovation on the part of our District Attorney's Office to serve our victims and our community even better. The first is a Victim Resource Center grant. I, I won't go through all of the details, but I will mention that we recognize that there are specialized needs in our elderly and dependent communities. Oftentimes, when they are victimized, there are a lot of barriers and roadblocks to accessing services on the part of, of this community. Over 20% of our population is comprised of citizens who are over the age of 65. We have four expansive senior communities, of which my mom is a resident of one, and we have over 150 licensed assisted living and skilled nursing facilities. So when, when our elder population becomes victimized, oftentimes, there are so many barriers from transportation to access to other services, and oftentimes, our community has to go from one place to another, and that can make it very difficult to access needed services. So this grant allows the District Attorney's Office to continue providing services and coordinating services that we already do, but we can do it more efficiently. This allows us to create a Victim Resource Center in-house in the District Attorney's Office that pairs with a number of different services that are offered in our community, so it can literally be a one-stop shop. So when someone is there because they are a victim of financial abuse or physical abuse, we can set them up with mental health counseling. We can fill out forms for housing. If the caregiver happens to be the defendant, there's someone who is in immediate need of care, and we need someone to literally step in and take over. We can bring all of these services under one roof so that our community doesn't have to go from place to place. Oftentimes, those are where the gaps are in, in fulfilling those services. We will partner with Beautiful Minds. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to collaborate with our community in order to provide those services, and this grant allows us to do it. It requires a board resolution, and it requires a minimum match that our office will be doing out of our own budget, our currently existing FUD, so it is not costing the county any additional dollars. So, we have seen family justice centers across the state. This is a little bit different, targeted strictly to our senior community, and it's sort of an example of, of Placer County sort of leading the way. And we are very proud to have received this grant, and we'll ask the board to approve a resolution ratifying the existence of the grant and allowing us to provide those sub-award recipients with those funds.
Great. So I'll look to see if there's any questions from Morgan, from the board? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Guyer. Over the weekend, I was contacted by a person that may be a victim of elder abuse, and I know there's a part of your department that handles that. Is there someone that I should contact in your office in order to look into that?
Absolutely. We have investigators. We have a dedicated elder abuse prosecutor. We have victim witness advocates specifically assigned for our elder population. So offline, I'm happy to provide that information so that we can get that started.
All right.
And contact the, the law enforcement agency within that jurisdiction as well.
All right, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, not seeing any other questions. Is there any public comment on this item?
I see none.
Not seeing any, so I'll entertain a motion.
No other approval of the item?
Second.
So I have a motion Gore, second Wygant, and this is a roll call vote.
Aye.
Wygant?
Yep.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Okay, then we'll go on to item 8A.
Thank you very much. We have received a second grant from the Office of Emergency Services dealing with specifically domestic violence. This grant will help supplement and maximize the way that we provide our resources in domestic violence cases. We already have a domestic violence investigator, victim witness advocates. This will allow us to co-locate a victim counselor in our office as well, as well as fund a dedicated domestic violence investigator to help with the critical, immediate follow-up that occurs in domestic violence cases. In 2018, 20% of the violent crime was attributed to either domestic or intimate partner violence. It is something that no community is immune from, and we have seen some relatively highly-publicized examples of domestic violence incidents in our own county. We take these cases very seriously, and we continue to try and innovate and strive to make sure we provide our services to our victims and survivors in the most efficient way that we can. This will allow us to co-locate that advocate, as well as provide our dedicated investigator, and do it, again, similar to the other grant, all-in-one roof, so that all the services that a intimate partner, violence survivor, or victim needs, from housing to children's services to mental health counseling, all of those services can be connected at one time under one roof, and this grant allows us to do that. So I would ask the board, this, this likewise requires a resolution, as well as the ability for us to partner with Stand Up Placer and provide funds to them to co-locate that victim counselor. So I would ask for that resolution very respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Not seeing any from the board. Are there any public comments on this item?
I see none.
Not seeing any, so I'd entertain a motion.
Second.
Holmes, motion, and Gore, sorry, had the, for the second, and it's a roll call vote. Gore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Gustafson?
Aye. Thank you for partnering with these organizations, too. I think it's great to, we have so many great organizations serving our public. I really liked that about the, both programs.
I, I agree, and your comment just before I came up, I think, was that we are very special in this county, that we have good relationships with our, with our partners, and that's reflected here in the good work. And I know my office very much appreciates the support of this board in these efforts, and our fellow partners in these endeavors. So thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to present to you today, and thank you for the amendment.
Thank you, and, and do drive the speed limit on the way back.
We, we shall, thank you.
Okay, now we will go back to our 9:40 timed item. This is renaming of some roads in the Olympic Valley area. Ben, and, yes, Rebecca?
Good morning, Chair, Members of the Board, Todd, and Karen. Rebecca, to... Rebecca Tabor, Deputy Director in Engineering and Surveying Division. And with me, I'd like to introduce Ben Bardaxion, Deputy County Surveyor. We appreciate the opportunity to present to you today on this item, and we will both be available afterwards to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rebecca. Today, we are requesting the adoption of a resolution authorizing the Deputy Director of ESD to assign new road names, to replace public road names that contain offensive terms, squaw. I'm sorry, we have the slides. Is there a clicker? The county has been contacted at various times in the past by representatives of the Washoe Tribe to remove the board squaw from road names. In October 2020, the local Public Service District changed its name to Olympic Valley PSD. In September 2021, the ski resort changed its names to Palaces at Tahoe. In November 2021, the U.S. Secretary of the Interior issued orders declaring the term as derogatory and ordering the removal of the term from federal lands and the creation of a task force to find replacements for the names of the geographic locations. In consideration of the recent naming efforts within the area and in agreement with the Department of the Interior orders, the Placer County Road Naming Policy, Resolution Number 86125, allows the county to rename a road when it is determined to be in the public interest to do so. Specifically, Section 7 of the policy requires inappropriate or offensive terms will not be permitted. This slide shows the location of Squaw Valley Road, the horizontal and vertical hatching, Squaw Peak Road, the dash dots, and Squaw Peak Way, the double lines. Squaw Valley Road is 2.37 miles. Squaw Peak Road is 0.24 miles. Squaw Peak Way is 0.18 miles. Each of these roads is maintained by Department Public Works Maintenance Fund. The naming effort was conducted by county interdepartmental cooperation to arrive at proposed names in consideration of the local history, the environment, consistency with the local community identification, and wayfinding considerations, awareness of the county policy to avoid duplications, and spelling and pronunciation considerations. Squaw Valley Road is to replace, excuse me, Olympic Valley Road is to replace Squaw Valley Road. Shirley Canyon Road is to replace Squaw Peak Road, and Marmot Way is to replace Squaw Peak Way. There are up to 620 property owners potentially affected by the road name changes. In appreciation of the impact of the proposed name changes, during the fall of 2021, a cooperative effort amongst the county's Chief Executive Office, Public Information Office, and Community Development, Engineering, and Surveying Division was launched to inform the members of the public and the community specifically of the proposed renaming efforts. In December 2021, a public survey was posted to the county's website, offering the opportunity for the public to weigh in on the proposed names. With over 600 respondents to the public survey, the county next sent mailers to the specific property owners, informing them of the intended name changes in the public hearings. Notices were posted along the roadways, and advertising ran in Sacramento Bee and Sierra Sun. The January 27 Planet Commission public hearing resulted in a four to one vote in favor of the recommendation to the Board of Approval. Some other considerations are, it's valuable to understand that in this area, the USPS delivery is by the Olympic Valley Post Office Box for mail service in the valley and not directly to the residences. The ZIP code name is Olympic Valley. The Public Service District was renamed in 2020 to Olympic Valley PSD. The local municipal advisory committee was renamed to Olympic Valley in December 2021. Staff researched to determine the interim Olympic can be used for non-commercial purposes such as road names. With the approval of the road names, only the road names will be updated. The address numbers will remain unchanged. This slide shows in December 2021, a public survey was conducted in conjunction with PIO and CEO Office. It was posted to the county website and provided the public the opportunity to give feedback of the proposed change of the names. Additionally, the survey provided the, and the property owners along the routes to provide feedback. The public survey collected nearly 700 responses. Results of the public survey indicated that those responding, about 20% own or live, own property or live on Squaw Valley Road. Of the 20%, about 76% indicated that they were in favor of changing the name to Olympic Valley Road. Similarly, other respondents to the public survey, 15% indicated that they live or own property on Squaw Peak Road. Of the 15%, 41% indicated that they were in favor of changing the road name to Shirley Canyon Road. Currently, there are no existing addresses assigned to Squaw Peak Way. We do not include those results here. We are aware of the impact that the road name change has on the property owners, residents, and visitors to the area. We also recognize the desire of many to make the changes effective as soon as possible. The effective date, if approved, would be 30 days out from the board's decision. ESD staff would send notification letters identifying the effective date and official name change to the property owners. ESD would notify 911, first responders, USPS, and will update the county permitting system, the county's assessors database, and the county GIS. The work to fabricate and install the signage along the routes to update the road names would be performed by DPW Roads in that time period, weather permitting. Some additional implementation considerations we have include the notification of electronic mapping, GPS, wayfinding services to alert them of the effective date of the county's official name changes. We will also update and notify, notify the official effective date to private delivery services, UPS, FedEx, DHL, and notify the local utility and emergency services providers. The notification letter that is sent to the property owners is encouraged to be used to communicate the effective date to their personal contacts and services. Real quick to reiterate, the post office box for USPS services remain unchanged. The address numbers will remain unchanged. With that, today, we're respectively requesting the action to approve road name changes from Squaw Valley Road to Olympic Valley Road, Squaw Peak Road to Shirley Canyon Road, Squaw Peak Way to Marmot Way. Make a finding of exemption pursuant to CEQA Guidelines 15061B3, and adopt the resolution authorizing the Deputy Director of ESD to assign the road names. Thank you. I'm available for questions.
Great. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Just one point.
Yes, go ahead, Supervisor Gore.
One point of clarification, I'm guessing this is the case, but for Squaw Peak Road, about 40% of the residents were in favor of Shirley Canyon, and 40% were not, but I'm guessing that there wasn't a consensus with the write-in suggestions. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. There are a number of other considerations that go into the selection of the name, pronunciation, spelling, ease of communication on emergency service radio, and also conflicts with existing names in the valley, particularly in that area. So for those reasons, while other names were written in, we arrived at Shirley Canyon.
Shirley is a whole lot easier to pronounce than some of the other words, yeah. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay. I'm not seeing other questions from the board, so we'll open up the public hearing, take public comment on this item. If there's anyone in the room or on Zoom who'd like to address the board? There is, Chair. Michelle, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Good morning. This is Michelle Prestowitz. I'm a project director at the Truckee River Watershed Council, and I just want to say thank you to Chair Gustafson and the Board of Supervisors. I'm here to reiterate our support to rename the public roads in question to Olympic Valley Road, Shirley Canyon Road, and Marmot Way. And I want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors and the staff for taking this very simple and decisive move to do what's right. And we further hope that the county will implement as quickly as possible the name changes to the three private roads listed in the staff report. So why is this so important to a watershed council? Simply put, the Washoe Tribe of Nevada and California are our partners, shaping our projects, our programs, and all of our collective environmental future, and they're important members of our community, past, present, and future, and they simply deserve this respect. For these reasons and many others, we really do applaud the county's renaming initiative. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Michelle. Chair, I see no further comments. No other public comments, then we will close the public hearing, and we can do this under one motion, is that correct, Karen? So we'll be making a finding of exemption pursuant to the CEQA Guidelines, Section 1506B3, and adopting a resolution authorizing the Deputy Director of Engineering and Surveying to assign the road names as we've discussed. Do I have a motion?
Someone?
Motion Wygant, second Jones, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Thank you, staff, and I really appreciate all the outreach that you've undertaken on this process, and I know that your work is kind of starting now with getting everything changed, but really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, too.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We'll move on then to item three on our agenda, page 17 of our board book, and this is Organic Waste Disposal Reduction Ordinance.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Sadie Caldis. I'm an Environmental Resources Specialist with Environmental Engineering and Public Works, and I'm glad to present the Organic Waste Disposal Reduction Ordinance to you today. We have been working with county council, environmental health, and human services to draft the proposed ordinance to meet SB 1383 requirements. Environmental health has been involved with the edible food recovery program and requirements, and human services has also been involved in this program, and they are assisting with edible food recovery capacity planning, which I'll explain more in just a little bit. SB 1383 was passed in 2016, which set targets to reduce methane emissions in California. Organic material creates methane when it decomposes in the landfill. And when we talk about organic material, the main material that we're referring to are food scraps, green waste, paper, and cardboard. The regulations are in effect now, and targets include a 50% reduction in statewide organic waste landfill, and in 2025, that goes up to a 75% reduction in statewide organic waste landfill. There's also a target for 20% recovery of currently disposed edible food by 2025. And when we discuss disposed edible food, we're talking about food that, good food that businesses throw away instead of donating. SB 1383 requires jurisdictions to adopt and enforceable ordinance with the SB 1383 requirements in it. CalRecycle provided a model ordinance for jurisdictions to use. County staff used that model ordinance as a template, but we revised it for county programs and to allow more flexibility. This is an overview of all of the sections in the proposed ordinance. The first section is the purpose and intent, and this summarizes the two state laws and regulations that are captured in the proposed ordinance. AB 1826 implemented mandatory commercial organics recycling programs, and that took effect in 2016. SB 1383 requires jurisdictions to adopt and enforce an ordinance, but it will also help reduce food insecurity by requiring commercial food generators to donate edible The next section is the title, Organic Waste Disposal Reduction, and the next section is the definitions. Most of the definitions in the proposed ordinance are right out of the SB 1383 regulations. Staff did include a couple extra definitions from the model ordinance just for extra clarification on the terms. The next section of the proposed ordinance is requirements for single-family generators, and it states that unless exempted or waived, subscribe to organic waste collection service or self-haul to a recycling facility. This is expected to be regular trash service for residences in the county. Because of improvements being made at the Western Placer Waste Management Authority, the facility will be able to divert a high percentage of organic material. This will allow us to commute to use our One Big Bin program, which is our one container system that collects mixed waste, and it gets sorted at the facility. Some households also have a green waste cart, and they will be able to continue to use that green waste cart. The majority of the eastern county area qualifies for low-population or elevation waivers, which would exempt generators from some or all organic waste collection requirements. The more populated area in Tahoe still has to meet some of the new organic waste requirements for collection. Staff are working on a solution, and we plan to propose an alternate compliance approach for this area, which would allow residents in eastern county to continue to use the One Big Bin system for organic waste collection also. This section also requires generators to place designated materials in the designated containers, and it states that nothing prohibits a generator from reducing organic waste, recycling on-site, or using a community composting site. This would allow generators to compost, use organic waste for animal feed, or other recycling This next section is requirements for commercial businesses, and similar to the residential requirements, it also states that unless exempted or waived, subscribe to organic waste collection service or self-haul to a recycling facility. And due to the same reasons discussed for residential generators, this is also expected to be the regular trash service for commercial generators. There are some separate collection services that larger generators already have in the county for businesses. An example is there's food waste collection for some of the larger food businesses, so that program would continue. So by, by having organic waste collection service, businesses would have the One Big Bin, which is the regular trash, and then continue the existing programs that they're already participating in. This section also requires businesses to place designated materials in the designated containers, and it has a couple more requirements to provide organic waste containers to employees, tenants, contractors, and customers, and to educate employees and tenants and ensure proper compliance. An example is if they do have a food waste collection container, then they would need to educate their employees for a proper separation of those materials. And this section refers to some of the waivers and exemption, exemptions that we've included in the proposed ordinance. There are some that we are already using under existing regulations, and there are some with the new organic waste laws that we would like to, we would like to use. There's de minimis waivers for small amounts of organic material. There are service level waivers for generators that have a low service level, physical space waivers, low-population areas, elevation and emergency waivers. The map shows the low-population and elevation waivers on it. The orange represents the low-population area that would only need to comply with the existing recycling laws. It would be exempt from the organic waste collection requirements in SB 1383. The section in green along the lake is subject to the new organic waste regulations that we're working on the alternate compliance approach for. The next section of the ordinance is for self-hauler requirements, and it states to separate organic waste and haul to a facility that recovers separated organic waste. waste and haul to a facility that recovers separated organic waste, or haul to a high diversion organic waste processing facility. And this means that generators in the county can self-haul to either of the two materials' recovery facilities or to the transfer stations. Commercial generators also have to keep records if they self-haul material, and then nothing exempts generators from mandatory refuse collection required by Placer County Code. And there is mandatory collection from an existing ordinance. This ordinance does not change that, but it would continue to allow generators to self-haul in addition to their service if they're in that mandatory collection area. And this section of the ordinance is for commercial edible food generators, and this is what I mentioned earlier, for businesses to donate food instead of throwing it away. And the proposed ordinance includes to arrange to recover the maximum amount of edible food that would otherwise be disposed, and enter into agreements with organizations or services for collection or acceptance of food, so this would be to enter into agreements with food banks or other organizations, to maintain records of the amount of food being donated, and to allow inspections. Environmental Health would implement this program and conduct inspections during their routine retail food inspections. And this slide has a graphic from CalRecycle showing the generators that would be required to participate in that edible food program. It's in two tiers of generators, and it would, the requirements are in two phases. The Tier One generators are required to start participating this year, in 2022. This includes wholesale food vendors, food service providers, food distributors, supermarkets, and the larger grocery stores. This applies to grocery stores that are 10,000 square feet or larger. Tier Two generators would be required to start participating in the program in 2024. This includes hotels with food facilities, restaurants that are 5,000 square feet or more, or that have 250 seats or more, health facilities, state agencies with cafeterias, large venues and events, and then local education agencies, which are schools with on-site facilities. It's likely that many Tier One generators are already participating in a program in the county for edible food donation. There will be some Tier Two generators that may not be participating but would be required to start. Over the next two years, county staff would educate the Tier Two generators and assist them with getting started in the program. This section has the requirements for food recovery organizations and services, and this would be to food banks or any other community groups that recover food. They do not have to enter into an agreement with a food generator to take food from them, but if they do enter into agreements with generators that are Tier One and Tier Two generators by the requirements, then the food recovery organizations also have to maintain records and annually report to the county the amount of food that they received. Jurisdictions are also required to conduct capacity planning, so every jurisdiction has to estimate the amount of food being generated by the Tier One and Tier Two generators, and then we have to work with the food recovery organizations to understand the amount of capacity that they have, and make sure that they have enough capacity to be able to accept all of the edible food that can be donated. The proposed ordinance includes that food recovery organizations have to respond to county requests regarding food recovery capacity. The next section is requirements for facility operators, and this is for facilities that recover organic waste, such as compost facilities. And similar to the capacity planning for edible food, we also have to do capacity planning to ensure that organic waste facilities have enough capacity to take the amount of material being generated in the county. And the proposed ordinance requires that these facilities respond to capacity planning information requests by the county. The next section is requirements for exclusive franchise haulers. They would be required to identify facilities and transport to facilities that recover organic waste and obtain approval from the county, which we would expect to be able to do this in franchise agreements and other communications with our waste haulers. This next section is on inspections and investigations by the county, which are required by SB 1383. The proposed ordinance would authorize county staff or their designee to conduct inspections and investigations, including on collection containers, and this would be to do inspections for contamination in containers. An example is the food waste container, if a business has it. And our waste haulers are currently inspecting containers for this program, so this would be an expansion on an existing program. There's also inspections required for commercial businesses. Commercial businesses would be subject to inspection for record-keeping and compliance with the self-haul requirements, for qualification of waivers, and for providing containers for tenants and customers. And then there would also be inspections for the edible food program, for the edible food generators, and the food recovery organizations that Environmental Health would conduct. SB 1383 also requires that the county has a way to receive written complaints, and if we do receive written complaints, then there may be inspections to investigate those complaints as well. This section of the ordinance is for enforcement, and I would like to provide a little bit of background on the enforcement and why this is included in the proposed ordinance today. The SB 1383 regulations requires that jurisdictions have an enforceable ordinance. The regulations have a very specific process for enforcement with penalty amounts that are listed in there that jurisdictions are required to enforce with. If jurisdictions don't comply with SB 1383 requirements, then those jurisdictions are subject to direct enforcement from the state. The penalties from the state on jurisdictions range from $500 to $10,000 per violation per day. Not having an enforceable ordinance is considered a major violation in the regulations with a penalty that ranges from $7,500 to $10,000 per day. Because of the One Big Bin program in Placer County, where organic waste collection will be through our one bin container system, and because of our compliance with existing programs, we're not expecting to have a lot of compliance issues. If we do, we have to determine if a violation has occurred, which would be through inspections or compliance reviews, and then we have to implement enforcement. The first step would be to issue a notice of violation, which would allow us to give generators 60 days to bring that violation into compliance. And if the violation is not resolved after that time period, then we would be required to issue citations. The first one is a $50 penalty, the second is 100, and the third and any subsequent penalties would be $250. The proposed ordinance also would allow the county to recover unpaid fines and collection costs, and there's also an appeals process, which would be a letter to the Director of Public Works. I wanted to also point out that container contamination is exempt from penalties. There's also a two-year education period that the regulations allow that we've built into the proposed ordinance. This would allow staff to work with generators in the county, inform them of requirements, and assist them for the next two years. The enforcement portion of the regulations is not required until 2024. This slide just reviews the timeline. In 2022, we're required to adopt an ordinance that includes enforcement. We would start conducting annual compliance reviews, the route reviews, which are inspections of the containers for contamination, and the other inspections required by the regulations. And during this time, we would just educate violators, and then in 2024, the inspections would continue, and that's when the notice of violations and penalties would start if violations still occurred. County staff have started doing outreach already on the new organic recycling law. We have a county webpage that explains SB 1383 requirements and what that means for Placer County. We've also started posting information on social media. We've included some information in residential bill inserts that have gone out this year. And we also hosted a town hall just last week to inform businesses of the new requirements and to explain the proposed ordinance to them. We have direct emails to impacted businesses that are planned to go out, and that we will also start conducting site visits. This would be by county staff and our waste haulers. The action requested today is to introduce and waive the oral reading of the proposed ordinance. Staff would return to your board on March 8th, at the March 8th meeting, to request adoption of the ordinance. And this concludes my presentation. I'm glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Sadie. Comprehensive approach and presentation. Do we have any questions? Oh, it looks like all the lights are on. We'll start over here. Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you. Thank you, Sadie, for that very in-depth presentation. It seems to me that a lot of this could be avoided by if we just use our garbage disposal. Is that correct? I mean, nobody's going to be overseeing what we've put into our garbage disposal.
Supervisor, that is correct.
That's correct. And then when those commercial edible food generator, they work, this is a restaurant, I assume, that works with an organization to collect that food, and they monitor that, they record that, so there's a record of how much they've given, and the recipient has to also monitor how much they've taken. Does the recipient of that food have to comply with all this, or do they just do what they want with it?
Supervisor, the food bank or food recovery organization, if they, they're not obligated to enter into that agreement with the businesses. If they do, they do have to keep records, though. That would be required by the regulations to keep records of the amount of food that they recover and to report that amount annually to the county. I would like to also say that there are programs already operating for this. An example is the Placer Food Bank in western county, where they have a route where they go pick up food scheduled from generators, and they track the amount of pounds that they recover and that they also provide to people that need food. So this would be in the proposed ordinance to require, but it's a system that's already happening and it's already being tracked.
So I would assume that these are fruits and vegetables that have been used for food generation?
It could be a variety of food. Most of the generators they're receiving food from right now are, an example, like a grocery store or a food distributor, places like that. The proposed ordinance would require some restaurants and some other businesses that they don't normally receive food from to start participating and start donating any edible food that they have that can be donated.
So an organization like Seniors First that was just here, if the food was already prepared and is ready to eat, would that comply? Would they have to do the same thing as far as picking up the food that's already been prepared, ready to eat, and disperse it to community members? Is that part of the...
If the food is food that can be donated, and environmental health staff would be working with the businesses over the next couple years to help explain what can be donated and what cannot be donated. So if it is food that could be donated, it would go to, an example, Placer Food Bank. They would keep the food. They have refrigeration and storage there, and they then distribute it to churches or other community groups that give it directly to people in the community that need food.
So some of these details really going to take some time to really work out, though, right?
Yes, Supervisor, that's correct.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gore? SB 1383, the gift that keeps on giving, right? My goodness. Thank you for your presentation. I will say, Supervisor Holmes, my husband would never allow me to use the disposal. That's right, because then I would have to replace the garbage disposal more often, so...
He would have to replace...
That's true, and he doesn't want to do that. A couple of things. One, I just wanted to clarify, so for the food generators that have to divert, I think you said it was 20% of their total? Is that what it is? So if I'm a grocery store, I've got to at least donate 20% of what I have left over?
Supervisor, the 20% is a statewide goal, and so the generators that are required to participate in the program, they're required to donate the maximum amount possible.
All right, okay. And, you know, I know many already are grocery stores. I know some of the hospitals already are, so it's really these smaller businesses, Tier Two, that will have to, a lot of them come into the compliance. And then I just, I appreciate, you know, unfortunately, you have to have enforcement. I appreciate that we're not going with the state enforcement, because the state enforcement penalties, they recommend $7,500 to $10,000, and we're looking at $50 to $250 penalty. So I really appreciate the fact that we're not coming down heavy. We're going to work with folks to try to meet this mandate, and really, ultimately, the value is that the food, at least some of the food generators can benefit, you know, other community members. That's great. And then we've got all the rest of SB 1383 to deal with in other areas. So I do appreciate the flexibility of staff to make this not super onerous.
Thank you, Supervisor. If I could mention, I just wanted to clarify that $7,500 to $10,000 penalty amount is what the state would fine the county for. And so they did have a range of penalties in the regulations that the county could select from, and we did choose the lowest penalty amount allowed by the regulations. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. Supervisor Wygant?
Couple of questions. One is, Bonnie and I are on the landfill authority, one of our committee assignments, so we've been talking about this issue for a bit, but along the way, I actually was kind of surprised that the regulation was driven by greenhouse gas emissions and not recycling enhancements, if you will. Do you know, has there been a statewide analysis as to the greenhouse gas emissions that come from landfills and how much of an impact, how much of a greenhouse gas emission benefit this will create?
Supervisor, I'm not sure if there has been a statewide. There was an environmental impact report done for these regulations, and I know that there was some analysis in there. I'm not sure if it includes the greenhouse gas emissions and exactly what they would expect from the regulations, but the regulations did take effect with the goal to reduce the emissions.
Right. And if you guys come, I'm not requesting any thorough research, but if you come across some expectation as to what the state is looking for as it relates to decreasing greenhouse gas emissions as a result of this regulation, I'd appreciate having that. And then, secondly, any, I'm curious as to the flavor of comments that were made in your workshop with the business community, if anything, any big takeaways or observations that you might have?
Supervisor, there were no negative comments. There were just a couple of questions about, one from a school asking how to, you know, educate students and just how to work it out for their business, but we have not had any negative comments about the proposed ordinance.
Thanks.
Supervisor Jones?
Thank you for that very good presentation, but I will tell you, I have concerns about the Tier Twos that are going to be supplying foods. So my question is, could you explain to me what kind of foods are we going to be sending forward from these? I know it shows different foods, lasagna, vegetables, and stuff like that. So will they be prepared meals that were not eaten, that come from hotels, restaurants, cafeterias, health facilities, educational agencies?
Supervisor, the meals, I think, is something that is going to need to be worked out a little bit over time. We've talked to the food banks a little bit about this, and they cannot receive food and then repackage it there themselves. So if the food they received has to be packaged already, to my understanding. And so I think that there's going to be some food from the Tier Two generators that will not be able to be donated. generators that will not be able to be donated. I don't know the details of legally what can and cannot be donated, but that's something environmental health would be able to assist those businesses with. And if they can't donate the food, they can still throw food away that can't be donated. It's not good for donation and then it would get collected with either their food waste collection or their trash service and that material would still get composted. So it would get recycled. It's just that, that if they can donate it, then they would be required to donate it instead of toss it.
Well, one thing, I worked in food service management years and years ago, but I think that something like this where food is separated out for donation, it, it's going, in some instances, it could lead to pilfering by employees because if they don't keep track of what is, you know, thrown out or sent off. For instance, if your cooks, your chefs, somebody wants a steak, they flip a steak, it lands on the floor and they go, oh oops, I, you know, I can't serve this, I have to, so I'll just take this one home. Restaurants typically don't allow that because it encourages people to find ways to, you know, cook a steak and take it home. But if they have something like this, there's a good chance they'll lose control over what is sent off to the, you know, to the food, to the food banks or what's just taken home by employees. That's one concern I have. Another concern I have is there isn't any restaurant or any food facility that is, can legally repackage food. I mean, there are strict, used to be anyway, strict standards with your health department. They used to do inspections and stuff like that. Even your steam tables are supposed to be set at a certain temperature and if they don't stay at that temperature, your food doesn't stay hot enough for bacteria not to grow in, in that food. I warn everybody, if you ever get soup in a restaurant, especially a cream soup that's tepid in temperature, don't eat it. Don't eat it. So if we're getting food donated by education agencies or hospitals or anything like that, what are the chances that someone has touched this food? That, are they worried about communicable diseases or illnesses being passed forward, especially if we donate it to seniors, senior food support? You know, what are, what are, what's, it's, to me, it's just a big question mark as to the safety of all that portion of it. I understand the wholesale food and, and supermarkets and stuff like that because their stuff expires, their shelf life expires. But that's another question too, is if you can't sell something because its shelf life expired, why would it be good enough to give to other people for, you know, food insecure folks? Because we're telling everybody at the store, it's expired, so we're not going to sell it to you, it wouldn't be good for you, but we're going to give it to these people and say, but it's okay for you guys. See what I'm saying? And so I know you mentioned that there would be edible food inspections. Do you know who's going to do the edible food inspections? Is that somebody from the state?
He's sitting back there. Jason, do you want to come up? I, I think some of these questions are going to be answered in the next item, but Jason's here for that one, so maybe he can help Sadie out.
Supervisors, Jason Felipe, Environmental Health. So with the rollout of this program, all of the food safety protocols that you were talking about Supervisor Jones, those are still in place. So if there's been any food that's been out of temperature too long, it can't be donated. If there's any food that's already been on a public service line, it can't be donated. And a part of the education that environmental health will be doing with the food recovery organizations and the generators is, is making sure that all these, these safety protocols are still in place.
Sounds to me like there's going to be a lot more manpower needed.
Yes.
Well, and with, with new legislation like this, that is complex, we probably will see some, some unforeseen outcomes and we'll probably have to make some adjustments as we go.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Sadie, on, I had one question on public outreach. Did we involve the chambers of commerce throughout the county on the, for the town hall and the, or can we as we move forward? Because I think they would help get the education pieces out.
Chair, we can definitely involve them in, in outreach moving forward. When we sent out the invitations for that town hall that we had for businesses, we directly emailed the businesses that have food waste collection now, that have a couple more requirements and for the tier one and tier two generators that would be required to participate in the edible food program. So we tried to really target the businesses that would be impacted by the proposed ordinance, but we can definitely include the chambers moving forward. That way they could reach out to any other businesses that are interested as well.
Thank you. And so with that, this is, we have two actions, introducing and waiving the, oh, I'm sorry, public comment. Let's, yes sir, you had wanted to speak and I almost skipped you.
Morning.
Good morning.
My name's Richard Lingandjo and I am curious as to whether this action in its entirety is connected at all to the proposed biomass plant in the city of Auburn at the wastewater treatment facility.
Do you have any other comments and then we'll answer your questions at the end? I don't believe so, but we'll, we'll confirm that for you.
And, and also is the biomass plant in the county, in the board's preview at the landfill facility and the greenhouse gas issue? Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Other public comments and then we'll answer questions at the end.
Hi, my name is Jennifer and my question for this program is with a lot of the volunteer organizations, you have multiple people in multiple trucks or cars going to pick things up and my concern is if they can't get there in time to pick food up from, let's say, a smaller restaurant and they have their new food coming in and such, or they don't make it in like, and they're reporting that they're donating this food, but they're not able to come pick it up and it ends up going bad, like is there ways to work around so they're not penalized? Because I see like a pretty big government overreach coming into private companies through this. I, I think it's a good program. But I do see people getting, having more issues, maybe needing to hire more help also with volunteer organizations if they decide to report the stuff. That's one more thing that they have to have a position for, for somebody to keep track of those things and I, I think that really needs to be thought about because of volunteer organizations, a lot of them too, you know, they're running by threads. I know for St. Vincent de Paul, they do have a hospital pickup and such, but if you're starting to pick up food that's been pre-made, how are you going to transport it safely back and forth as well? And I, I'm not hearing that, maybe that's in the next presentation as well. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you Jennifer. Do we have anyone else in the room that'd like to speak on this?
Good morning Board of Supervisors. My name's Skip. My, my engineering background is causing me to wonder if there's some way we could capture methane gas from the composting slash whatever these generator guys are that are providing the input material for the process so that you could use the methane to actually power the equipment that's going to transport the materials, whatever those happen to be. Because all of this sounds like, because it's organic waste, it would compost. And how about a local compost facility in neighborhoods where the citizens in that neighborhood are actually involved in the compost activity themselves? That would actually reduce then the amount of transportation of said materials. Anyway, just thinking off the top of my head. Thanks.
Thank you Skip. Do we have anyone online?
I don't see any.
Okay, staff, would you like to address any of those questions that were raised?
Yes, Chair and Supervisors, I, I wanted to answer the one about the biomass facility mentioned. The proposed ordinance is really because of SB 1383 requirements for jurisdictions to adopt the ordinance. So it's, it's not tied to a project in Auburn or the community. And I know there were some concerns about pickups from the food recovery organizations. Part of the requirements and the regulations for the generators to have agreements with the food recovery organizations is who's going to do the collection and the frequency of that. So that would be an agreement they would have worked out with them already ahead of time, knowing when they're going to be coming in, when they could donate the food. And then also for the last comment about the gas system, there are, there are gas systems to capture emissions from landfills. My understanding is it doesn't capture all of them. And so this would keep organic waste out of the landfill so it's not being generated to begin with.
Great. And then the final question I had here was about local composting facilities and whether we might encourage that in the future?
Yes, thank you Chair. The local composting, community composting is, is allowed by the proposed ordinance. We've included that in there as an option for composting. And so if there were any community groups or organizations that wanted to have a community composting area, they would be welcome to do that under the proposed ordinance. I don't know of any programs currently that the, the county are working on for community composting though.
Great, thank you. I think that captures all the ones I had noted. And so with that, we're being asked to introduce some.
I do have a question.
Oh yes, I'm sorry.
So the community composting, would they have to get a permit or have some way to monitor that compost, the community compost?
Supervisor, I'm not sure if that would need a, a permit, but I can definitely find out and let you know.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, I'm sorry Board? Okay, great. Then we're being asked to introduce and waive the oral reading of the proposed ordinance. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Holmes on the motion, Wigant on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much Sadie.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to our 1020 timed item, which is Health and Human Services Environmental Health Fee for Edible Food Generator Inspections and Education. Might answer more of our questions.
Yes, I'll try my best. Good morning still, Chair Gustafson, Supervisors. This presentation is a companion item to the previous Public Works presentation about SB 1383 and organic waste reduction. As staff previously mentioned, part of SB 1383 requires certain large scale food facilities defined as commercial edible food generators to donate edible food to food recovery organizations that otherwise would be disposed of. These generators are required to meet certain requirements in doing so. Typical generators would be large grocery stores over 10,000 square feet and large restaurants over 5,000 square feet. SB 1383 also requires the local agency or designee to inspect, educate and review records of generators on an ongoing basis to support county organic waste diversion goals. Because environmental health already conducts food safety inspections at these facilities on a regular basis, environmental health and public health staff determined it would be beneficial for environmental health to perform these new SB 1383 inspection and education activities, specifically in unincorporated areas. Environmental health can integrate these new activities into our, our existing routine food facility inspections. Environmental health has studied the amount of time needed to perform these new activities and it has estimated 30 minutes per year per facility to review contracts, review food recovery logs and, and the other requirements that have been mentioned. Today, environmental health is requesting your board to consider for approval of a new annual fee of $103 for commercial edible food generators intended to recover the cost of this ongoing program. Cities have also expressed interest in environmental health performing these inspections in their jurisdictions because environmental health performs food safety inspections in cities as well. This fee could be used for generators in participating cities. Of course, if environmental health were to perform these inspections in cities, we would need to come back to your board at a later date for approval. I, I'd also like to mention environmental health did take part in the town hall on February 15th that was mentioned in the previous presentation. All, all the potential generators in unincorporated areas were invited and staff discussed the proposed fee, the purpose and the amount and we did not receive any questions or comments about the fee. That concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Do we have questions? Yes. Supervisor Gore?
Thank you Jason, appreciate it. And you had mentioned to me there are about 49 tier one businesses, correct?
That's correct.
So we're not talking about a lot of businesses and, and you know, my, my first reaction to that is, you know, if we've got the money, let's just absorb it. I would prefer to do that instead of having to have another fee and your, your staff are already going out. It'll take a little extra time to do the work that needs to be done. But I think what, the other thing that when you and I discussed this earlier was that there's a potential for the other jurisdictions to come in and utilize environmental health to do these inspections as well. So maybe not the city of Rosewood, but some of, maybe Rockland or Loomis might need, I mean, they've got to comply, so they may need somebody to come out. And in that case, it, it makes sense to me then that there will be an opportunity to pick up the cost of the services that our staff is providing. So I don't love it, but I also see that if, especially if we end up adding more than just the 49 in our unincorporated areas, that it makes sense to have some fee recovery.
Sure. And, and the goal is to, to integrate this into our food facility inspection and our, our vision is that eventually this just becomes part of that inspection and the operators really don't see much of the difference. The, the fee, if approved, would just be part of the billing that we do each year. So I'm trying to integrate this as much as possible to what we're already doing.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Jones?
Yes. So the $103 annual fee, is that for tier one or tier two or both?
That's going to be for tier one and tier two.
Oh, for both, okay. And then you also described a size of a restaurant. What, what size was that?
5,000 square feet.
5,000. Can you give us an example of like what restaurant or what facility that might be participating?
It's going to be your largest restaurants, maybe something, just your larger commercial restaurants, so something like a Cheesecake Factory, something that's a really big restaurant. Your smaller restaurants and strip malls and things like that, those are going to be way too small to, to be included in this. Basically, there are 519 brick and mortar facilities in unincorporated areas and 49 would, would qualify for this, but that's including tier one and tier two.
Oh, 49 is both.
So roughly, I didn't separate the markets and restaurants, but roughly about, about 25 restaurants would be included.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Any other questions Board members? Okay, we'll go to the public. Any public comments on this item? I think we got them out on the last item. Is there somebody on Zoom?
There is.
Okay.
Michael, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Yeah, sure. I agree with Bunny Gore that it's another tax. I would, I would avoid putting another tax on the business. And another, another thing, it seems like it would, this, this bill would interfere with restaurants giving food to, to whoever they, they choose, like, like maybe farmers for their animals and stuff like that. So I would, I would avoid that and then thinking outside the box, why, why can't we just say, state of California, the Placer County isn't going to support this? What, what would be the consequence? So I mean, at, at some point, I mean, there's so many regulations from our legislature that it makes sense not to support some of, some of their mandates. But that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Jason, would you like to talk about any programs where giving food away to farmers for their animals or any, what the consequences are?
Sure. Well, I'll, I'll speak a little bit about the, the consequences and if Sadie wants to add to it. There are a pretty steep daily fines for the county not complying, I believe. I believe it's in the $10,000 range, so those would be those consequences of not complying. And as far as donating to farmers, if there is food that is edible and recoverable, the goal is to give it to food recovery organizations so they can pass out to the community. Anything that would not be recoverable could be given to farmers.
Great, thank you. Any other follow-up questions from Board members? Okay, so we concluded our public hearing on that. I'm sorry, I didn't announce that Karen. That was a public hearing. Okay, so we'll conclude the public hearing, and then I'd look for a motion. Ygant and Supervisor Holmes on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm going to vote no.
Okay. And one opposed and no abstentions. Thank you. We're going to move on now to our 10:30 timed item, 4.1. This was on our supplemental agenda, and this is on the STR fee program. And I believe that staff is requesting a continuance of this item. Is that Stephanie or Crystal?
I'm happy to do this. So as we, you know, obviously continue to formalize and put in place our short-term rental ordinance, one of the areas is the fee schedule that is being derived to deal with the program itself. I believe staff really wants to spend a little more time to evaluate not only the rate, but something that is viable as we move into the program that starts April 1. So what we'd like to do is request a continuance from your Board and bring this back at a time certain on March 8th for a formal discussion with you all. And I'm not sure, Megan, is there a time or?
Yes, we can bring this back to the Board on March 8th at 10:45 a.m.
Okay. And do we need a motion to that effect?
We do.
Okay. First public comment. Are there any public comments?
I see none Chair.
Okay, accept a motion on that. Ygant and Supervisor Gore on the second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on now to item number five, County Executive Fiscal Year Midyear Fiscal Update. Mr. Chatney.
Good morning, Chair Gustafson, members of the Board. Daniel Chatney with the County Executive Office. And I'm pleased to be here this morning to present the Fiscal Year 2122 Midyear Budget Update. The report is positive, and as we walk through the summary today, we will see that operating revenues exceeding, are exceeding operating expenses for almost all major operating funds. Our first slide is the General Fund Sales Tax Revenue. Post-COVID sales tax revenue receipts are stable. Inflation, supply chain disruptions, and employment shortages are all impacting sales tax revenues. So we will be holding our projection flat compared to fiscal year 2021. On the Public Safety Sales Tax, the state pool of Public Safety Sales Tax has been producing positive receipts for Placer County. The county's allocation has increased this year, which has led to dramatic increases in Prop 172 revenue. However, our newest projections for our allocation for fiscal year 2223 has decreased, which will flatten revenue for next fiscal year. The General Fund Transit Occupancy Tax Revenue is, remains stable at $9.5 million and compared to last year's actuals of $9.5 million. On our Tahoe Transit Occupancy Tax, last year's results were $12.8 million of, at fiscal year end of revenue. We did budget $10.8 million for this fiscal year, but our receipts are indicating that we'll be closer to the $12.7 million projection at the end of fiscal year. So barring any unforeseen impact to TOT activity in the Tahoe region, we will be increasing future revenue projections to be consistent with current levels. The General Fund Property Tax Revenue is, again, the primary revenue source for the General Fund, is increasing about 5.8% over last fiscal year to a total of $222.3 million. So that brings us to our year-over-year comparisons. In the General Fund, we are projecting a net use of reserves of $11.5 million. This is due to investment in capital projects strictly from the General Fund Capital Reserves. In our Health and Human Services Fund, which is largely based on a reimbursement type of activity, their revenue projection for fiscal year end at $253.9 is an increase over $237.5 million in fiscal year 2021. Most of that is due to increased activity related to COVID response, ARPA-funded programs, and the like. The revenue increases relatively to that, from $234.8 million to $252.6, showing just a positive net to add to fund balance. The Public Safety Fund, again, is, revenues are projected to exceed their expenses by about $7.6 million. That's primarily due to the increased Public Safety Sales Tax Revenue. The departments in the Public Safety Fund, the District Attorney, probation, and sheriff are all working on prudent use of these reserves for capital and other one-time purchases.
Can I ask a quick question? Did you say, Daniel, though, that in next year's fiscal year budget, you anticipate the sales, the Public Safety Sales Tax revenues to decline somewhat?
No, the allocation percentage for Placer County will decline slightly, and that's based on point-of-sale transactions within the jurisdiction. So as other jurisdictions in California continue to reopen, their allocation percents will increase, so ours will level. So we think it's only, it's coming down like .014%, but that would relate to pretty much leveling our revenue projections flat. So we don't, and not anticipating a reduction in sales tax revenue, just flattening of it for next year.
Great, thank you for explaining it.
In the Library Fund, it's projected to end fiscal year 2122 with increases in both revenue and expenses compared to the prior year. The expected increases in allocated property taxes and purchases of equipment for the automated materials handling project drove those variances. Our Fire Control Fund, again, property tax receipts have risen here, but there is a slight decrease in revenue, which is resulting from what we consider variable state aid funding or funding to the county from statewide fire efforts. But overall expenses will increase due to the purchase of a new truck and the expected CAL FIRE contract increase. HADA and RMRA revenue, so HADA is the highway users' tax, and sales tax projections for fuel have increased by about 30% over the prior year as more fuel is being consumed, as well as increased fuel prices. So the results of increased revenue from highway users' tax and SB 1 revenue. But Public Works can expand and retract project work for actual revenues received. The Fiscal Year 2122 Capital Fund, facilities is expected to be before your Board on March 8th with their mid-year CIP update, but with support of General Fund Capital Reserves, a few key projects that will be discussed are the ones listed there. Criminal justice facilities, including the Burton Creek Tahoe Area Station, HHS Admin Building, the PCGC Phase 1 Infrastructure Project, and Atherton Tenant Improvements. So coming back to the General Fund, here's our multi-year projection and revenue and expense, as well as fund balance. Again, we're going to see expenses exceeding revenue due to planned use of reserves for capital programming. That's going to be true in fiscal year 22, and again in fiscal year 25. The use decreases overall fund balance from 100, this year's use of fund balance decreases our reserves from $151 million to $139 million. And the revenues are currently expected to exceed planned expenses, except in 2025 again, for a planned contribution of capital reserves, and that's for the Burton Creek Tahoe Project. So here's a graphic on the different General Fund reserves and our overall fund balance, which is identified with the green line at the top. Some of the key points from this graphic are contingency reserve is, the policy of 10% is being met and will continue to be met barring any unforeseen economic challenges. And the parsh trust continues to increase based on Board direction to help offset the unfunded pension liability. But overall, this graphic shows the General Fund is healthy. Current capital financing plan assumptions that we've included in our budget projections are the 2022 bond issuance of roughly $72 million. This is for the Health and Human Services Admin Building. The new debt service here is estimated between $3 and $3.2 million, assuming a 30-year debt financing. And then we're expecting some subvention back from Health and Human Services to offset that debt payment for an annual debt service from the General Fund of about $1.2 to $1.4 million. Potential future debt issuance projects, $24 million, and that's the Burton Creek Tahoe Justice Center Project, again in 2025, which would result in about $1.3 million of annual debt service. And then potentially a Placer Parkway contribution being debt financed, and that would result in about $1.8 million of annual debt service. But we are still discussing all of these projects and how the allocation of General Fund Capital Reserves and the issuance of debt can be consolidated to make this a feasible project. So some of the things that are included in some of the fiscal year 2122 projections and will be also included in the 2022-2023 budget are listed here. And some of these are not currently included in there. But some of the things on the table for discussion are labor negotiations with the PPEO, as well as management employment groups, vehicle and heavy equipment replacement programs, the Health Benefits Committee, the results of that, homelessness efforts, our opioid settlement, retired annuities, and capital debt service. The American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA, just as a reminder, we received or will receive about $77.4 million from the Department of Treasury. We've received the first 50% this last May and expected to receive the second tranche in May of 2022. December 31st was our first required reporting period, and at that point in time, qualified expenses under ARPA totaled $271,381.74. However, expenses are picking up with the progression of some of the projects underway listed here. The PCGC Tier 1 Water Sewer Stormwater Project, the Health and Human Services Mental Health Adult Crisis Respite Center, the HHS Public Health and Mental Health Program Expansion, Affordable Housing, and Broadband Infrastructure. So what is next for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 and the development of the 2223 budget? On April 5th, 2022, we will conduct our department budget presentations. We'll cover the 2223 budget and allocation requests, any emerging issues and department priorities, supplemental requests and capital expenditures. May 10th, we'll come back to your Board with a fiscal year 2122 third quarter budget update. And then following in June, on June 14th, a public hearing for the recommended budget for 2223, and on June 28th, adoption of the fiscal year 2223 budget. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Daniel. Questions for Daniel? Oh, come on.
Oh, I thought you said-
Yes, Supervisor Holmes.
I thought you said Suzanne. Thank you for, and you started out that this was a positive report, is that right?
Correct.
Good, that's what we wanted to hear. You could have stopped there. No.
I thought about it.
Couple of questions. While I want to make sure that we're able to fully fund our pension obligation as we move forward these next few years. The bond issuance for the HHS building, if we had extra funds that we could put towards that and go out and refinance that, would that be a possibility to refinance at a lower rate? If we put more money into the, or should we just let that go?
So currently, we're still in the planning phase for that debt issuance. The, we have a finance working group that convenes every Wednesday or Thursday, and that includes the treasurer, tax collector, auditor, controller, our external financial partners, and the CEO's office. So we're still developing the documents to go along with that bond issuance. Currently, we're estimating it at $72 million with no additional contribution from the General Fund Capital Reserves for that. But that wouldn't preclude us from looking at different opportunities when those bonds are eligible to be called, to then refinance them if the conditions are right for that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Supervisor Ygant?
I'm aware that we've had discussions in our implementing the vehicle and heavy equipment replacement budgeting system, and I'm presuming that that's going to be countywide in every component of every department. What's your expectation as to when that policy will be fully implemented?
Supervisor Ygant, so currently we're working with the Department of Public Works and the CEO's office on the heavy equipment replacement program. This is our first one that we're tackling. We're fully expecting to have a draft of that equipment replacement program ready for the 2223 budget consideration and recommendations.
And the rest of the departments?
Yeah, the only other one would be the Sheriff's Office, and so having conversation with them. I think, you know, I think it's important to have a plan in place. The conversation from you all will be, how do you fund and pay for those? And I think that's a conversation we have. And just like we're talking about the heavy equipment, the question is, we'd like to have a plan for replacement. How we get there may not be in one year, maybe a few years. But my ultimate goal and expectation is that we're going to talk about all equipment in the 2223 budget. Whether you can actually get up to speed on funding these, that's a conversation we have to have some further conversation on.
Yeah, thanks. So as one of five, I think it's very important we have that plan in place also.
If I could follow up on that, what is the dollar threshold for a heavy piece of equipment or the definition?
I don't know that there is a numerical value added to that. Right now, for Public Works, we're looking at all things from large-scale mowers to dump trucks, to asphalt grinders, anything that would fall in there, heavy equipment. And I think heavy is just the definition of construction-type equipment.
Okay. I'm more familiar with programs where we identified a dollar threshold just so that the departments were prepared and banking enough money annually to fund the replacement in the future, whether it was called heavy equipment or, you know?
And I, Supervisor, Chair Gustafson, I think in this case, we can use the word heavy interchangeably with Public Works. There are some larger pickup trucks that are considered heavy equipment, but they're just a pickup truck, but they're included in that program rather than the fleet replacement program.
Right. Which was actually my question, the fleet replacement program. Do we have that budgeted in where each department will set aside a certain amount? Are we already in that process so that when they need a new vehicle, money has already been set aside in their department budget?
So all departments that are in the fleet replacement program are contributing replacement value to that? That's done more on an annual basis for the vehicles that need to be replaced that year?
All right, thank you.
Great. Any other questions from the Board? Okay, any public comment on this item?
Hi, Jennifer, again. I may be a little bit confused, but my question is, I believe we were talking about sales tax and how it's gone down and it's plateaued, so our revenue isn't coming up as high. And I was just wondering if there was some sort of workout if the lockdowns had affected the general budget and General Fund? And if so, by what percentage it was? And if we continue to do lockdowns, if there's a downward trend towards the General Fund to run our county? Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Daniel, wait, I'm sorry. Are there any other public comments before we answer questions? None on Zoom? No one else in the room on this item? Okay, Daniel, if you'd like to address that?
Of course. So the General Fund Sales Tax, the revenue that we receive into the General Fund is really a very small portion of the General Fund. I think it amounts to roughly about $18 million a year on a General Fund budget of $360 million a year. So it's a relatively small proportion. However, Placer County, through the COVID pandemic, did not see a large reduction in sales tax revenue because the county largely stayed open during, and businesses stayed open for that. In addition to that, because we had that openness in our business environment, our allocations of state pool and county pool revenues from internet sales, the Public Safety Sales Tax stayed high, so we got higher allocations of that. So we saw very little in the way of reductions in sales tax revenue for either the Public Safety Sales Tax- for either the public safety sales tax or the general fund sales tax.
And I think the confusing factor was, we do anticipate a slight reduction as other jurisdictions now open up in the pool.
In the pool revenue.
The pool revenue that is collected.
But still, we're still estimating our projections to be higher or equal to this year.
Great. And Daniel, I think just to clarify too, since folks don't understand the difference between the county revenues and a lot of the city revenues, city revenues are typically reliant upon sales tax generation, where our county is more reliant upon the property tax dollars that we receive. And of course, our property tax values have gone up in the past two years.
Correct.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? That we do have another person online who's raised their hand.
Michael, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Oh, yeah. I just want to point out that I read this morning in the California Globe that removing the mask mandates caused a 25% increase in people going out to restaurants. And I know that we didn't really enforce masks mandates so much in Plaister County, but we still saw the signs. And I think a lot of people that were misled into believing that there was really a pandemic, instead of a plandemic, were apprehensive about going out. So that might lend to a decrease in tax revenue.
Thank you, Michael. Any other comments? Okay, then we have four items or three items to take action on, and that is to approve fiscal year 2021, 22 consolidated budget amendment, approve the purchase of fixed assets, and delegate authority to the purchasing agent on those contracts above in excess of 100,000, and introduce an ordinance approving an amended fiscal year 21, 22 uncodified allocation of positions to departments.
I'll move approval.
So Gore and Wegant, and this is a roll call vote. Gore?
Aye.
Wegant?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, team out there. And I believe that concludes all of
our items. We'll go back into closed session now, and we'll come back to public at 12:30 for our remaining two timed items for the day.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider two items of existing litigation, one item of anticipated litigation, conference with labor negotiators, and one public employee performance evaluation.
Okay, we're going to resume our board meeting with a report out of closed session.
The board met in closed session to considering the following items. Plaister County Deputy Sheriff's Association versus County. The board heard a report, no action was requested or taken. Second item under existing litigation, Plaister County Deputy Sheriff's Association versus County of Plaister. The board heard a report, no action requested or taken. Under potential exposure to litigation, the board heard a report about one potential case and provided direction. Under conference with labor negotiators, the board heard a report and provided direction. That concludes this report out of closed session.
Thank you, Karen. And now we'll move on to our 12:30 timed item. This is Assembly Bill 1599. To consider a position on this assembly bill. And Joel, let me turn it over to you.
The Plaister County Executive Office. Today, I'm asking your board to consider taking a position on Assembly Bill 1599 authored by Assemblyman Kevin Kiley. This bill would allow the effective repeal of Proposition 47 to go before the voters at the next general election. So what was Prop 47? Prop 47 was a citizens initiative passed in November 2014 that basically raised the threshold of the value of goods stolen to trigger a felony from $400 to $950. Additionally, the ballot measure made some simple drug possession offenses into misdemeanors. It also provide past convictions for these charges, and those convictions may be reduced to misdemeanors by a court. Some recent news regarding Prop 47 that I want the board to be aware of. A recent poll conducted by the UC Berkeley of Institute of Government Studies, along with the Los Angeles Times, February 3rd to February 10th, they surveyed and got respondents to see how they would support or oppose amending Prop 47. So I'm going to read this verbatim, just so I don't mess this up here. 59% of survey respondents said they would support amending Proposition 47 to let certain property crimes be prosecuted again as felonies, while 30% favored leaving the law unchanged. Additionally, voters across the political spectrum voted, supported changing the law, and I quote, "According to the poll, 88% of strongly conservative voters said they would want to amend Proposition 47. 64% of moderate voters, voters said they would want to amend Proposition 47. 41% of somewhat liberal voters said the same. And those voters who identified as strongly liberal voted largely to support to keep the proposition intact, with 67% of those saying they'd rather keep it as is." I do want the board to note that both political parties have introduced bills that have aimed at tackling some certain provisions at Proposition 47. There is a recent bill, Assembly Bill 1603, that would only lower the value of goods stolen from 950 back down to 400 for a felony. But Assemblyman Kevin Kiley's bill, for the most part, is the only bill that has been introduced that would effectively repeal the entire proposition. And if I didn't make it clear earlier, if this bill is signed into law, the voters would then have a say again at the next general election. So frankly, it could, if it's signed into law quickly, 2022, but most likely if it does sign into law in November 2024, you're looking at that. I do want the board to be aware that a hearing for this bill is set to March 8th, and depending on whatever the board decides, whether it's support, opposition, or stay neutral, the county will be submitting a letter to that fact. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Joel. Do we have questions for Joel?
No questions. I'll wait until after public comment.
Okay. I'm not seeing any questions from the board. We're happy to take public comment on this item. Yeah, please come forward. Hi.
Sorry for the jacket. It's, yes, you know, it's hailing snow outside.
We just saw that.
I wasn't even doing that about an hour ago. Hi. Hi, everybody. My name is Shreena Latch, and I'm here for Plaister County Moms. And I'm in support of Kevin Kiley's proposal of Assembly Bill 1599. As we know, it's had devastating effects in San Francisco, the Proposition 47, and other areas in our state. And I feel that we should definitely support this bill and change the language, change the verbiage, whatever we need to do. But we need to keep our community safe. I know that about two weeks ago, there was a robbery at our wonderful mall, and there was about five armed individuals that came and robbed the stores. And I had friends that were at the mall with their children. So as a county, as a state, we need to protect families or children. And there definitely needs to be a resolution. There needs to be something overchanged and turned here to protect the citizens. So I appreciate you letting me talk.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Did anyone else in the room want to speak on this item? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. So now is the time for any board comments.
Thank you, Joel, for bringing this to our attention. And, you know, I really appreciate Assemblyman Kiley reaching out to us. I had an opportunity last week to reach out to the Sheriff's Office, to our district attorney, just to let them know that we were having a conversation about this bill so that they were aware. Both Wayne Wu actually participates in the sheriff statewide organization on their ledge platform. District Attorney Morgan Guyer also participates on the ledge platform for the DA, statewide DA's association. And Morgan said that their association is not yet taken on position since all the bills have not been submitted. But he said that he would be supportive of a bill like this. But also, there are a number of other bills I'm aware of that are coming before the legislature that would oppose portions of Prop 47. And so, you know, we've seen the problems with the grab and goes, and we've seen the problems with people continuing to break the law and destroy private property, and there's no enforcement mechanism at all with our sheriffs and with our law enforcement and our district attorneys. And so I'm supportive of supporting this bill. But I think I would also like to support other bills that are similar that would repeal portions of Prop 47. And then I would even go further and had an opportunity to talk with Morgan Guyer and Wayne Wu, and, you know, are there some ledge platforms or some planks in our ledge platform that we might be able to work together on, right? So if some items come before them, and they are aware that, you know, we as a board, a local jurisdiction, can share our support of making changes, I think that's important. I think it's important that they see that it's affecting our local jurisdictions, not just the sheriffs and the DAs, but it's affecting our businesses and our residents. And I think we need to demonstrate that we want to see a change to this bill.
Thank you. Supervisor Jones?
Yeah. All I want to say was that a Prop 47 made a very comprehensive change to so many bills, reduced so many criminal offenses, that I think short of Assembly Bill 1599, anything else anybody puts forward is going to be pretty minute changes because this was so comprehensive. I think we need to get everyone to come out and try to impress on our legislature that this is the only way to go is just totally repeal it. I always felt that, you know, is it the Secretary of State that writes the summary, the title and summary of these bills? I always find it very interesting that they don't let the author write those because they call this the Safe Neighborhoods and Schools Act, when there's absolutely nothing safe in that bill at all.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other comments, board members?
I'll speak up that I do support taking a position to support this bill. But I do think our public needs to understand the consequences of how much more jail space and prison space we're going to need. And often, when I'm talking to taxpayers, they're concerned. They want these people put away, but they don't realize that we are maxed out right now, and it's extremely costly. So I think, you know, I'm going to support it, but I'm going to make sure I tell and educate the public as best I can what it's going to take if we start putting these people in jail for a year for these offenses. And then, three strikes, you're out. Now it's the rest of their lives. So it's significant cost, and it's significant cost if we don't do anything because they're affecting our quality of life. So I think we just need to be prepared on that and make sure we're sharing that information as we can. So with that, I'd entertain a motion. Yes.
Just with your comments, I'll just add that I think, Joel, as we go forward, you know, the devil is always in the details. I'm also supportive. But for me in Plaister County, where we have some really rich opportunity, is to not have our hands tied as it relates to arrest and putting somebody in our system. It's what happens to them when they're in the system. So in Plaister County, we have capacity for solid public protection, jail capacity, hopefully efficient court systems, quick justice, if you will. But then, if we're dealing with nonviolent first-time offenders, that's where our Health and Human Services can be additive, added to, not instead of, good, solid public protection and have better long-term outcomes. So I think if we can sort of mine legislative opportunities and/or reach out to some legislators, maybe we can help define what that looks like.
Some of the alternative sentencing and probation crews, I mean, we definitely.
And I do want to make it clear, and I really hope I'm not wrong here, this bill, should it pass and should it be repealed by the legislators, it wouldn't preclude the courts from working with alternative sentencing and other drug court, mental health court, homeless court.
Right. The way I read it, it just said one year, and I went, my gosh, we're going to be, we're crowded now. Suzanne, did you have another comment?
Yeah, just one more comment. Well, there's two things, actually. Part of the reason, the largest part of the reason why counties are overcrowded is because of the states reducing their number of inmates in their state prisons. And they've had to push all those folks down to the county jails, in which case, we don't even have room to incarcerate the lower-level criminals, I don't think. But I think that's a great idea, Robert, that you've got. And the other question I have for you, Joel, is, didn't they do away with the three-strikes bill?
You know, I believe so. From what I can remember, but do not quote me on that. I know, I don't believe it was in the Safe Neighborhoods Act, but I believe it's repealed.
No, I agree. I think it repealed it before that.
The state had, you know, and I'm not defending the state, but they had to do it because they were sued, because they were overcrowding in unsafe conditions in the prisons. So, you know, and they pushed it down. You're absolutely right. And we're not dealing with it well, obviously. Great. So I'd entertain a motion.
So Madam Chair, I would like to move that we support Assembly Bill 1599, dealing with Prop, dealing with Prop 47 repeal, along with other similar types of legislation that would appeal, repeal portions of Prop 47. That would be my motion. And then I think, just, Joel, I think I'd like to work with our DA's association, or our DA and our sheriff's office to talk about other types of legislation in our platform that we could support, that would be of interest to all parties.
I have Jones on the second. And that included the editorial comment on other pieces of legislation.
If we can repeal 47 completely, we do have to make some amendments to 47.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, we'll move on to our 12:40 timed item. County Executive, this is on our legislative platform amendment. Yes, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Once again, Madam Chair, members of your board, Todd, Karen, Joel Joyce of the Plaister County Executive Office. Conversation today is a result of, on December 14th, when your board approved the 2022 legislative platform, which allows staff and our lobbyists to advocate on behalf of Plaister County. During that discussion, your board had asked staff to bring back language that would allow the county to advocate vaccine mandate policy at the state and federal level on legislation and regulations. Few things I want to tackle on the legislative side first. Last fall, September, October timeframe, through an executive order, Governor Newsom directed the California Department of Public Health to follow procedures established by the legislature to add the COVID-19 vaccine to other vaccinations required for in-person school attendance, such as measles, mumps, rubella, et cetera. Under current California law, students are allowed to, and I quote, "skip" vaccines required for in-person attendance at K through 12 schools after a doctor says it's medically necessary to do so. However, since current law only applies to previously approved immunizations, the state must offer broader personal belief exemptions for all newly mandated vaccines, unless lawmakers and Governor Newsom override that requirement. Due to that, on January 24th, 2022, Senate Bill 871 authored by Senator Pan was introduced, which, if signed into law, would eliminate the personal belief exemption for not only the COVID-19 vaccine, but any future disease immunizations as determined by the California Department of Public Health. Additionally, I want the board to be aware of, since the deadline, to get this staff report and information in, on February 10th, Assembly Bill 1993 authored by Assemblywoman Wicks was introduced that would require an employer to require each person who is an employee and/or independent contractor who is eligible to receive a COVID-19 vaccine employee and/or independent contractor who is eligible to receive a COVID-19 vaccine, show proof that that person has been vaccinated against COVID-19. Additionally, I do want the board to be aware, there are about 1,450 bills introduced last week, which was the last week they could be introduced. A majority of those were introduced on Friday, so many of those are in print this morning, and I haven't had time to go through them all. So there could be more out there, and additionally, there could be more bills through the legislative gotten amend process that come regarding COVID-19 vaccine mandates. So the Assembly Bill 1993, obviously, does, 871 focuses on schools, Assembly Bill 1993 focuses on employers, and there's no, there's no employee limit, as some previous regulations or other legislation has alluded to. On the regulation side, most folks here are aware, January, in January, in a 63 decision, the Supreme Court reinstated the temporary injunction, which stopped federal OSHA's emergency temporary standard. As a result of that temporary injunction being reinstated, federal OSHA withdrew their mandate through the emergency temporary standard. I do want the public and the board to be aware, that doesn't mean that the federal OSHA's mandate is gone, it just means that the temporary mandate is gone. So federal OSHA has come out and said that they are still working on a more permanent rule, which goes through a more rigorous rulemaking process, which would allow the county and other organizations and the public to comment on that rulemaking process, which I would expect, based on my knowledge, to start kind of beginning in earnest here in the next month or two. Additionally, on the federal, besides the federal OSHA side, you do have Cal OSHA, which is a separate entity altogether. While they can certainly institute an emergency standard, which they have currently done, nothing in regards to mandates quite yet, but they certainly have the ability to, it still would have to go through the legislature to become permanent. But at least on the emergency side, we would advocate against any vaccine mandate should this language be approved. So I have the language up here, just so folks can get a better idea. I'm not going to read it out loud, but what I do want the board to understand importantly is what this language doesn't do. So this doesn't prohibit businesses, schools, events, whatever it may be, to require a vaccine mandate or proof of vaccination to enter that space. This language that you see up here, we would, the county would only advocate for the state and federal government against mandating that schools and/or businesses and/or employers mandate, require the vaccine as a condition thereof. So this is not, this isn't a ban against vaccine mandates altogether, it's just opposition to the federal and the state forcing it upon us, or businesses or schools. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Joel. Questions? Okay. Not seeing any up here, so I'm sure there's members of the public who would like to speak on this item.
Everybody see my shirt. It's pretty cute. Local mom made this for me. Thank you for having me again. So good afternoon, chair member, chair and board members. My name again is Shreena Latch. I'm speaking on behalf of many moms in Placer County. I'm here to oppose SB 871 and any other bill, bills, legislation bills, as proposed, that may impose hardships or disparities upon children in our community. That will take away parental rights or our physicians' rights to assess and do what is best for us and our children. SB 871 stands to amend Sections 120325 and 120335, and will repeal Sections 120338 and Health and Safety Codes relating to public health, much like what happened under SB 276 and SB 277. HEPV vaccines had and still have had severe adverse reactions, but yet is still implemented in our children's immunizations. SB 871 authored by Senator Pan, Newman, Weiner, and Assembly members Weber, Wicks, Curry, will allow C-19 vaccinations to be added to school immunizations. These vaccines, so far, have no long-term studies to show that they are safe or effective for everyone. There are still ongoing studies being done with infants to age five and with pregnant mothers. This has been reported by the FDA. Shouldn't we allow more time to study the effectiveness of these vaccines before we add them to immunizations? Why the haste? Let me explain the haste. Federal rewards the state money between $50 to $100 per child fully vaccinated. This is more about money than efficacy. I'm going to read something from NUIC. This was dated back, it was reported by Barbara Lee Fisher back in 1999. It was determined that genetic and other, as yet unidentified, biological factors can place some individuals at higher risk for vaccine-induced injuries and deaths. Calls into question the constitutionality of one size fits all forced vaccination policy. That does not take into account individuals' biological indifferences or differences. This still holds correct today. State-elected officials should not demand sacrifice of life to make others feel safe. Should not tie the hands of physicians treating patients, you know, offering alternative methods and combining illnesses or diseases. I'm just going to finish it with this. There is nothing better than natural immunity, which has been proven, and to those that cannot create them for themselves, and we should work on implementing it there, you know? And I do appreciate your time. I do oppose AB 1993, SB 871, SB 866, AB 2098, and SB 1479. And I do approve language that allows, allows for choice on medical procedures, experimental vaccines imposed upon us and especially our children, not to get rid of our choice. Thank you.
Thanks, Shreena. Appreciate your comments. Others in the room who'd like to make comment?
Hello, Matthew Oliver, and thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to speak. I want to first open up and just say thank you to each and every one of you for your strength, your courage and boldness over the past two years to make decisions that were not based on political rhetoric, but that were right for your constituents and that really supported small businesses, families, and our ability to succeed. I applaud you, and I'm very grateful for that. And right now, as a small business owner, as a father of five, as a pastor, all in Placer County, one of the toughest things we've experienced is trying to find employees. And I am not anti-vaccine, I am, I'm not anti-science or medicine, I am very pro people, their ability to make their decisions. And we've had one of the toughest things right now is we have a struggle to find employees. I've already talked to a lot of our employees. If they were required to get a vaccine, they would no longer work in the state of California. They would find other odd jobs, handyman jobs, different things, but they would no longer work here, not just because they're anti-vaccine, but they're anti the intrusion of the government into their life. What happens when we're asking for a vaccine is now we're requiring our employees to share with us personal information about their health. If they get a medical exemption, we're asking them to share personal information about their health. Now that creates questions that we're asking of our employees, what are those medical issues? And now it creates all sorts of issues that we have on finding employees, keeping those employees, and it makes already in California, an impossible situation, being a small business owner, even more impossible. Makes it very difficult to do what we need to do and continue to serve in this community. So I would encourage any kind of language that's going to keep the government from being able to mandate and impose any of these emergency measures or COVID measures onto small businesses and families, and I really appreciate, and I ask you to be brave, strong, and courageous once more as you're facing this. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else in the room? I don't see anyone, but I think we have some callers on Zoom. Oh, yes, sir.
How are you doing?
You're off duty on the camera, so you can...
I'm Austin Oliver, and this is actually my adopted dad right there. And before I met him, I was a homeless teenager that didn't make it past the sixth grade. Now I have worked my, I have worked very hard. I've bought my house, I've gone back, I've got my GED, I have gotten my business credentials at Sierra, and I've opened up a business here. But things that California is doing regarding mandates, I've lost employees who were also EMTs to other states already. And for me, life has been hard enough to get to this point. So anything that makes it harder for me to live my American dream, to live my dream and be successful in life, I'm going to ask you guys to stand firm and fight that as well. Because stuff like this, it's hard enough. I've only been open for six months, and I've had a lot of turnover because of California and the mandates and all the things regarding COVID. I'm just trying to survive, and I'm just trying to make things successful for myself and a lot of other people around me. So I'm going to ask that you guys be more helpful, because opposing things like this, that helps me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Marilyn? Marilyn, go ahead and unmute your mic. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Marilyn Jasper, Public Interest Coalition. We urge Placer County Board of Supervisors to simply take no position on SB 871 now, primarily because it may be amended. Barring that, we recommend the county to support it. Of course, further studies may change all protocols, but it is a fact that almost 1 million, maybe we've passed that mark by now, have died from COVID or its complications. And reactions from contracting the disease now vary widely, but if ever there was a time and a place to stick to the precautionary principle, this is it. I mean, we can look at some other vaccines, childhoods, for example, that have saved lives, or even animals. We have mandated rabies. Not everybody complies, but it's a mandate. There can be, and I believe there are, legal and reasonable exemptions that may be granted to those who need them or insist. I cannot describe or articulate in a timely manner how many people carry the virus and take it home with them or take it to public places. And I think this is not the time to avoid mandates. I trust that there are science, people who know what they're doing who are making those decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Jeremy, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Good afternoon, supervisors. This is Jeremy Birch, President of the Placer Public Employees Organization. As you all know, the PPEO represents the majority of your Placer County employees. We have come to such an interesting time in history where information is so readily available, yet the truth is hard to determine with so much noise. This is where personal freedom is so important. Some of your employees have genuine concerns regarding contracting this coronavirus and want to see protections continue to mitigate exposure, while other employees see an overreach of power through vaccine mandates, excessive masking, and the continuation of emergency powers for the governor. I personally believe choice is the freedom offered by the Constitution. We hope for your continued support for employees who want to take the shot, wear masks, distance, et cetera, and we hope for your support for those who would choose not to take the shot, who tire of masks and who want to return to a way of life we remember from before the pandemic. I want to thank you all for taking this opportunity to look at efforts you can make as a board to protect an employer's ability to hire, an employee's ability to work a job, and everyone's freedom to choose what's right for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Lynette, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I've called in multiple times, and I've been present in that boardroom multiple times, and this SB 871 directly correlates with AB 262, and the government overreach and weaponizing our Health and Human Services Director to have full authority over the county. My recommendation is that Placer County Board of Supervisors stop sitting on the fence and take a stand. If you continue to allow these mandates to infiltrate our community, it will only get worse. This is allowing full totalitarianism, communism, socialism, whatever you want to call it, into our community. The masks, in my opinion, are just a distraction. The COVID immunization and mandates are just a distraction because what's really going to happen is probably what's happening in Canada. This is just the first step to giving local government more control over our community. I don't know how anybody could ever think that it is a good idea to force people into an experiment, when there is not enough data, number one, and the data that is out there is completely censored and hidden so that people are not afforded informed consent. We all know that our legislature is giving the power to the governor, and we all know that the governor is using that power to be a dictator. It's time that people stand up and stop asking for permission. You know what you need to do. I don't know what that other caller, when she was talking about how people are contracting COVID and this and that. Everybody has a choice. There is a choice for redemption, and if you feel that you're taking the wrong path, turn around, go back the other way, return the money. We know that the government, the federal government, is holding you all hostage because you took that money from the American Rescue Plan. You signed that contract, just like the school boards, just like the city council. Everybody took the money. You have the opportunity to give it back. We can see the strings that you're being held upon. You are just puppets for the federal government to implement what they want to implement at the local level. Turn around, ask for redemption, we will forgive you, but if you continue to move forward this way, we will not be able to forgive you because our lives are at stake here. We will have to recall all of you, even if you get voted back in, because again, we don't trust the elections either. We don't trust our elections official, Ryan Ronco. He signed the Dominion Contract again. Wake up.
Thank you.
Caller with the number ending in 2515.
Hi, my name is Jennifer. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you guys for hearing all the opinions coming in. I would really love to see Placer County be a medical choice or a medical freedom county, where people could take responsibility for their own health and well-being and not be forced to take a... and not be forced to take a shot that does not have long-term medical studies on it. I think one thing that should be very alarming to everybody is that the drug companies were able to get a bill initially, or court order, stating they only had to give 50 pages a year of what was happening with the shot, with all the pre-stuff, the trials, and the information on what's happening with it and the long-term effects that they're starting to see. Now we've gotten, that would have taken 75 years to learn the information about this shot that's being given out. And because we have children now going in that they're recommending, we do not know the long-term effects on their health. We don't know if they're going to create autoimmune disorders. We know that myocarditis is something that is being shown in males. And we don't know if the reproductive organs are getting messed around with. And I just think we don't have enough information at this time to force it on everybody. And it's still in the experimental phase for most of the companies through the end of this year into 2023. So I would really love to see you guys let people have medical choice and medical freedom, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other comments? Okay. What's the pleasure of the board? We're being asked to amend our legislative platform with the language shown.
Thank you. I really appreciate our board being willing to have this conversation, and I know it's not easy. But I wanted to point out a couple of items in a couple of these bills, which I think are significant. SB 781 would repeal the personal belief exemption. So if a parent did not feel comfortable for religious reasons to give, or even a concern about the vaccination, they would not be allowed to allow their child to go into elementary school, childcare centers, day centers, nursery schools, family daycare home centers. We are, the legislature is saying, if they approve this, our kids can't go to school if a family member chooses to not get their kids vaccinated. And this, to me, it comes down to personal freedom, us having the freedom to make some decisions for ourselves. And if we don't push back on the legislature, and they'll just think, it's just fine. Everyone thinks it's okay. And we've heard from our residents, you know, mandates with concerns are not okay. And then we've got A B 1993. It basically would not allow people to go to work here in our communities, not only in the county, but small businesses. And I, because the state is going to mandate this, how does this affect our business community? You know, our residents, you know, I've already had plenty of people say, "We're going to leave California if things like this get passed." And we're not seeing the same type of onerous legislation happening in other states in this country. Right now, as you're having the Netherlands, Great Britain pulling away from mandates, et cetera, Governor Newsom and the California Democrats in this legislature are just doubling down. And I think we, as a local jurisdiction, should push back because one of these bills says that it just doesn't matter. If you're a local jurisdiction, you have no authority. A B 1993 basically says, "This is a statewide concern, and you, as local jurisdictions, should not concern yourself." And I absolutely disagree. We, as local jurisdiction, should concern ourselves about our businesses, the health of our businesses, our employees, the freedom that we have as individuals. And I think we have to take a stand and push back on onerous regulations and mandates such as these.
Thank you. Other supervisors? Supervisor Jones and Supervisor Wiegand.
Yes, there's a couple of things that I'll tack on to Bonnie's sentiment. It says here, if you read it, that Governor Newsom directed the California Department of Public Health to follow the procedures established by the California Legislature. I don't hear anything about medical minds or the CDC or Food and Drug Administration or anything like that. So that, right away, caused me great concern. You know, I mean, I've got a degree in human biology. I know some of the legislators are doctors. There are a few of them. I don't believe, there's a couple of them that have never actually practiced medicine. So I don't know that their degree is much better than mine, but at any rate. So I don't agree with that part. The California Legislature, they don't know everything. To add COVID, the vaccination, to others required in school, measles, mumps, and rubella vaccinations have been through the trials. I mean, we've had measles, mumps, and rubella for a long time, longer than me. And all those vaccinations have undergone the 10-year trial period with the Food and Drug Administration. I'm sure CDC probably also got involved in all of that. What we have right now are primarily experimental vaccinations that have never, once they've undergone the 10-year trials, maybe they've had some massive studies on the negative effects of the vaccination on people. I mean, there are websites out there that are trying to record negative impacts of these vaccinations and everything. They're not talking about any of that with regard to these. And then they talk about, since the current law only applies to the approved immunizations, the state wants to make it a broader, the personal belief, and they want to take the personal belief away for everything. And there is a reason why they had that in there. And for them, for our legislature to decide that that shouldn't be in there any longer, again, I don't feel they are the authority, and I don't see them referencing any authorities to address this issue. It's not, I'm with most people that we're not against vaccinations. I'm not against vaccinations. If my parents were still alive, you know, and they were compromised, I would have things to worry about. Anybody that's got family members or even children that are compromised or themselves, you know, the vaccination is out there. Nobody says that you cannot have the vaccination. But to mandate this without any of the drug and safety protocols or anything else like that, to me, it's very concerning, and I will never support mandating something that has not been through the trials like they have with measles, mumps, and rubella, and have the proven, a proven vaccination that actually works and has a lot less harmful side effects than this one does. So I will not support this or any such legislation.
Thank you. Supervisor Wiegand.
So I'll try to be succinct and not add anything that hasn't already been said, but I think this board has long had a history on COVID policy, supporting local control as compared to larger government, top-down, one-size-fits-all policies. As Suzanne just mentioned, there were periods when I strongly recommended individuals get vaccinated when Cindy and I toured Sutter Hospital, and we saw that the vast majority of people in the hospital who were severely sick, in fact, were ones who had not been vaccinated during the time of the Delta variant. But I think in our county, we've relied more on individual choice and dissemination of good, competent science. And I think looking back now, it's easy to see that there are a huge number of mistakes made as it relates to COVID policy when it was not reliant on individual choice but on top-down, big government, fits-all sizes. If you compare data in Florida, for example, which had a very open-ended, individually-based decision-making process about public health, their data is as good or better than California's, which had a very aggressive, state-based, top-down. If, in fact, counties throughout the country had individual authority to set public health policies, which would have existed if it were not for state mandates, there would have been 3,800 different examples to point to as we went through this whole process as compared to just comparing a few places that had very extreme policies one way or the other. But I think the bottom line comes down to constantly weighing and attempting to look at the best information that relates to the benefits and detriments caused by public policy. And sadly, in this case, the process, as is too often the case today with almost everything, has become too politicized, too polarized, national, maybe international level. So with all of that, I think it's important that we support this recommendation.
Thank you. Did you have another comment?
Yeah, one more comment.
Okay.
One more comment. I just wanted to also read on here that it says if this bill is signed, it would eliminate the personal belief exemption for COVID-19 vaccination as well as any future disease immunizations as determined by CDPH. This wasn't determined by CDPH because the governor directed the CDPH to follow the legislature's guidance on this. So for them to now say, "Any future diseases," that's just a blanket, you know? Here you go. Do whatever you want to do. And I don't believe that they're going to say that it's determined by CDPH because they're not using this initial guidance by CDPH. He directed CDPH. And I would also say that the Supreme Court's decision, the 6-3 decision to originally to stop that, for the temporary injunction to stop the OSHA from enforcing that mandate, to me, tells me that at least somebody up there with some brains and education have decided that maybe this is not a good thing to do. I mean, they're not doctors, but at least their judgment says that maybe this is not the right thing to do without further investigation, further research, and further data.
Thank you. Supervisor Gore, your light's back on?
I just want to go ahead and make a motion to approve this item.
I have a motion from Gore, second by Wiegand. Before we vote, I just wanted to say I'm going to vote in support of this effort. I have different reasons than some that have been articulated. I do believe there's medical benefits to vaccines, and I think there's a lot of benefit. But again, I believe it's a personal choice, and as long as we can take protective measures ourselves from those who have chosen not to by wearing masks or doing whatever else we need to do to separate, then I'm okay with opposing any state or federal mandate on this. I just wanted to be clear for the record. So with that, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Thanks, Joel. Okay, and now I believe we're going back to closed session.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to conduct one public employee performance evaluation.
Good, then we're coming back from closed session. County Council?
The board met in closed session to conduct a public employee performance evaluation of county council. The board wishes to report out that it was a satisfactory evaluation. That concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you very much, and we'll stand adjourned.